All right, Mary Kay Bouchier-Water, welcome to Not Just Headlines.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the opportunity.
So, most people actually don't know what a mayor pro tempore does. So would you be able to explain your role and position for us?
Of course. So, mayor pro tempore, we shortened it to that, make it a little easier on the community. Mayor pro tempore basically fills in for the mayor anytime she cannot be someplace, or to run a meeting, or anything that is required of the mayor. If the mayor is absent, the mayor pro tempore fills in. So, talking with staff about agendas, things like that. It's very exciting, even as an at-large representative. I did many of those job duties. Mayor Pro Tempore Ivon Johnson, who unfortunately passed away, had already given me a lot of those duties. She wanted me to learn as much as I could about the city, and I will always be indebted to her for that.
Is it what you expected it would be?
Yes, because I had watched her for so many years, and had watched the mayor for so many years. You know, serving on mayor since 2011, you see a lot. And it felt very natural to go ahead and be involved just as Mayor Pro Temp Johnson and Mayor Nancy Vaughn have been. So, it was very, very easy, yes. I don't want anyone to think that it has no challenges. It has a lot of challenges. But, you know, you just kind of meet each one and see what you can do to help.
And do you have to step in often? Is that like a thing that happens a lot? Is that even why this position was even created? That a lot of times that the mayor just can't be places and do stuff?
So, the mayor pro tempore position is the highest vote getter normally. It's a precedent that was set by council many years ago. And it's the highest vote getter in the at-large race. So, we have three at-large. And, you know, everyone loved Ivon Johnson, and she always got the mayor pro tempore spot. Prior to that, Mayor Nancy Vaughn had actually been mayor pro tempore. And prior to that, Mayor Keith Holliday had been mayor pro tempore. So, it's something that was created in order to basically fill in for the mayor. I mean, I run meetings, I have run council meetings, I have run council discussions. It's just something that, you know, it's kind of a, I want to say, kind of a natural progression when you've been an at-large person for so long.
So, you first started serving in 2011. So, take us back. What first got you interested in local politics?
So, I had a restaurant, My Hee Seafood Grill and Bar. And it was a fine dining type of seafood restaurant. Of course, we had some fried foods as well. But we specialized in grilled and broiled seafoods, and a lot of things like that. And I was not only the entrepreneur, I was also the chef, the waitstaff, whatever position I needed to be in that night. If someone was out, or if we got busy. So, I was lucky that I learned every position. But what got me interested in city government was, at that time, there was a way that they were charging people for rain that was coming off the roof. And I was just like, "Really? You know, that's not something I can control, and I'm leasing this property. Why is that something I have to pay?" Well, some people from the city came out to explain it to me. And once they did, it's anyone who has a meter, they pay a water sewer type thing. And what that does is that helps sustain the water pipes. We have some water pipes. I'm sure you've heard about some water pipes collapsing over the city. Then, that's what that pot of money is for. So, once it was explained to me, you know, I thought, "Wow, this is kind of intriguing how things are done." So, I'm the one who started researching about what city council does. I started watching the meetings on TV. And then, in the early 2000s, I started going physically to the meetings. And I got to know a lot of the city employees. It was just kind of like I was intrigued, and I was fascinated. If you've ever been in a courtroom, there's a lot of motion going around, if you've ever observed. And it's kind of the same thing. There's a lot of motion going on. It's not just what you see on TV. And that was fascinating for me. I was excited. So, that was my first inkling that I might be interested in city government. But I had some friends who said, "You'd be great on city council." And we had a women's group that met at my restaurant. They thought, "Oh, you'd be wonderful. You've learned so much about the city, you should be on that council. You could probably help them from a business point of view." And so, I did run in 2007, and I lost by 100 votes, which is not much at all. And I think I could have actually called for a recount, but I was like, "No, you know, I didn't win. You know, maybe I need to do something different."
Who took your spot, or who won?
Yes, well, the incumbent, there was an incumbent who won, Mary Raekstra. She won by 100 votes. Then, in 2009, and if we have time, get into annexations and rezonings and all that. But in 2009, we had annexed the Cardinal. Well, the community in the Cardinal put all of their money and votes behind one person, and he won by like 500 votes. So, I was not going to run again. I did not want to be three strikes, you're out. You know, that would have been just very embarrassing. But I still wanted to stay involved with the city. I was already appointed to boards and commissions and committees. So, you know, it was kind of something I was really interested in, whether I was on council or not at that time. So, in 2011, I was not going to run. I was bound and determined not to, at least at that time. But all of my friends started calling, saying, "Why didn't you file yet? What's going on?" And so, they kind of pushed me to go ahead and file, and they helped me. And I won. I was very excited, because I said, "We're going to wait till that last precinct comes in." Because everybody was celebrating, "Oh, you won, you won." But that's the same thing that happened in 2009. Until the last precinct, I had won. But when that last precinct came in, I lost in 2009. 2011, all of them came in, and I won. And I was very thankful to my friends for pushing me, because I really had not thought I would have gone that far. But I have to tell you, I have thoroughly enjoyed every minute. Do we have challenges, stresses, frustrations? Of course. But every day, I wake up so excited, thinking, you know, I can help someone who has a question about the city.
And can you explain to listeners what a precinct is, and how they help decide who actually gets the seat sometimes?
Yes, so precincts are in your geographic area. That is where, when you register to vote, you get your card, and it tells you what precinct you will vote in. So, geographically, that is usually a very small area. So, that goes along with the polling places. So, for the at-large and mayor race, we have 110 polling places. And that pretty, that does capture everything in Greensboro. So, the precincts don't necessarily match up with the polling places, but usually, they're pretty close. So, you might be in one precinct. For instance, mine is off Jefferson Road, and that is also where I vote. So, it's G 42, A 40B, I think. And they're designated numbers. And now, the Greensboro City Council is a nonpartisan race. That is one reason I thoroughly love it, because I'm very moderate, and I believe that I can listen to all sides and make a good decision. But, you know, a lot of people get into the partisan part of it. But, you know, it's really to be nonpartisan, and that's what really drew me to it.
You talked about your experience as a business owner as well. For, was it like over 20 years, was it?
22 years, yes.
Okay, okay. So, how have you brought that business knowledge into your role now on the city council?
So, I was a small business owner, an entrepreneur, if you will. And, you know, that creates a lot of challenges, especially in the 90s, when I was in small business. And, you know, a woman being in small business was not quite as prevalent as it is today. A lot of the restaurant owners were male. And it was just the experience of going through all of that, going through having to deal with people every single day, going through having to make solutions and innovative solutions. You know, it's not always in a black and white how you're going to deal with something. Sometimes, there's that little gray area where you need to know, is this the best decision for my business, or is this one? And then, you try to balance all that out. And it's very much like on council. I try to be very logical in my decisions and my research. A lot of people, they really say, "There's one thing you have to say about Mary Kay, and that is, she does her research." Because many times, it has come to me that, "Oh, you need to vote this way, or you need to vote this way." And I go and find out, "Well, you know, that's not quite what you said, nor is it quite what you said, but I'm going to make the best decision I can." And that's what I try to do.
So, you ran in 2007, and then 2009, and you lost both of those. And then, you ran again in 2011. So, after those two losses, what really made you want to try again? Because a lot of people can get discouraged by that. So, what was like that thing, like your motivator in that moment?
I would say my peers, my tribe, if you will, they were pushing me and saying, you know, "The knowledge you have, the business experience you have," they were the ones who really pumped me up to go and register. Because, you know, like I said, I was not planning to. But with their guidance, and their love, and their pushing me, it was really just an awesome feeling, because I got in there. And once I registered to run, I hit the ground running. It was just like all-in, you know? And that's the way I approach my campaigns, is I'm all-in, and I'm going to do everything I can to win. And if I don't, then we'll deal with that later. But, you know, I'm planning to win.
And then, when you finally won, you were also joining alongside two women, Ivon Johnson and Nancy Vaughn, at the same time, who were also mayor, and currently is mayor. So, what have they meant to you personally and professionally?
So, we were the three at-large ladies, right? And we had the best time, because I was able to... Well, first, they embraced me quickly. Many of them knew me through the restaurant, or with Ivon Johnson. I had been on committees. She had appointed me to various boards and commissions. And I knew both of them, perhaps Ivon Johnson more than Nancy Vaughn at that point. But we had the best time, and I really feel that we had a camaraderie that really helped us push a lot of things through council, good things for the city. We would put our heads together and just, you know, it was one of those times that you look back on, and I'm so glad I had that experience, because they helped me tremendously. And I would like to think that I helped in a way by bringing a little more of the business knowledge that I brought, because they've both been very gracious to me. Appointed me to regional boards and commissions, and, you know, it's just been a great experience.
So, would you say that they were mentoring you to be mayor specifically? Because that kind of seems like it's the track record. It's like, you get in, mayor pro tempore, and then eventually mayor. So, do you feel like they were mentoring you to do that?
I think subconsciously, they were. I never expressed interest in being mayor pro tempore or mayor at that point, you know, early on. And just knowing that I was able to glean knowledge from them, which they were thankful to share. That's where you get into some things with some areas and some... And I will say, with some women in careers, they don't want to share their knowledge. And I think that's very true at times. I think we're moving away from that some. But, you know, they were so willing to share everything they knew, and that just thrilled me, because I just wanted to soak it all up.
And do you feel like you're passing on that kind of mentorship to anyone else coming on behind you?
So, we have a new female. She took the at-large spot, Jamila Pender. And I'm hoping to help mentor her. She's going to be really good. She's come from the health industry, health system industry. And I really think she will be really good, and I would love to mentor her.
When you took office, there were some financial troubles at that time. You've been kind of open about that, with the restaurant closing, and some tax issues and court cases. So, how have you stayed focused through all of that? And what would you say to voters who might have a concern, or even just bring it up today?
So, during the recession, many people had to file bankruptcy. And we know this. Many people lost their homes, their businesses, they lost everything. Well, we felt like we actually went to talk to a bankruptcy lawyer. I think it's very appropriate to just let people know that, that, you know, even people like me, who are now mayor pro tempore, we've gone through financial difficulties too. So, we actually found out, my CPA wrote a letter that I could pull out any time. But actually, the IRS during that time had miscoded all my payments. My payments were made. But what happened is, even though they were made, I did make some late because of the recession. And so, there were some penalties, and that's what I paid on the IRS side, were the penalties. My CPA said, "You shouldn't pay that, you should fight it." But it would take another four years to get that cleared. So, I said, "No, I'll pay it, and that's fine. I don't mind admitting that."
So, now, you're in this position where Mayor Nancy Vaughn is stepping down, and then, you have replaced Ivon Johnson, and she's passed away. And alongside now, currently, a lot of current members are retiring. So, why do you feel like this is the right time for you to step up?
So, I think most people in the community know how hard I have worked, how I've been in every single district, almost every single day, at so many events, functions. I'm on the board of the Family Justice Center, the Board of Crime Stoppers. I help out the Mothers Standing Against Gun Violence. I've been involved and engaged. And I think that the institutional knowledge I have taken from being on council for 14 years will be so beneficial to new council members. Because if you look at it, we could have five new council members, or even six. So, if that happens, who is going to be there who has been active, involved, and in the community for the last 15, 20 years, and has also been on the ground, with boots on the ground, on all of the economic development successes we have had? That person is me. And, you know, I don't think I would want to run past that point. But I think one term, if I'm able to bring everyone in and share the knowledge and the institutional knowledge that I have with them, then I think we can continue the trajectory that we have right now. Because if we don't, there's not going to be anyone there. Now, I am going to back up and say, it is not just council that got all of the economic development successes, you know, with all of the jets being built, all the manufacturing, the publics. It is a collaboration. There is a whole team of people. But yes, council approves. So, you know, it's a very, very serious vote that we take to approve those developing things.
And some people say that you don't really do a lot in office, besides like show up to events for pictures. So, I kind of just want to give you a chance and a space to respond to that directly. So, what do you want to say to voters on that?
So, I would say to voters that, you know, at all of our retreats, we've talked about what do we want for the city. And one thing is the safest city. So, that goes along with what I do with walking with Mothers Standing Against Gun Violence. I walk with the police, I walk with the crime stoppers. We walk in the neighborhoods where homicides have occurred. And that is not, you know, right after the homicides have occurred, but maybe a couple of months down the road. We go, and we find out things from that community. So, I am on the ground, wanting to make our community safer. I'm also a chair of the municipal planning organization, the transportation. So, you know, the loop is around Greensboro, and that's bringing a lot of success. Under my watch, the community and the MPO, which is what we are, the transportation side of it, my committee is the one that voted to complete the urban loop with the federal and state funds. Because if we didn't, the loop would not be finished. So, things like that, that, you know, I'm able to... I don't mean push forward, but gently guide forward. I think that... And I'm also chair of the Piedmont Authority for Regional Transportation, which is, you'll see the park buses going back and forth sometimes. So, we provide regional transportation. So, someone in Winston-Salem may be working in Chapel Hill. Well, they can get on the park bus and get to Chapel Hill on time to their job. We do van pools. There's so many things that I think play into all of this with the knowledge I have, and with the way I am committed to making our community better.
So, with all those different projects going on, do you feel like there's like this one passion project that you're really excited to like kind of propel forward if you get the position as mayor?
So, I want to find innovative solutions. For instance, we are on the trajectory of trying to get more housing. We need more housing, because we do have all of these economic successes, which, by the way, didn't happen overnight. It took 10, 15 years of planning for those to come to fruition. And, you know, it's just very exciting that if you give me an issue or a problem, I'm going to find a solution, an innovative solution. For instance, I'll just give one, probably very small example. But we were having pedestrian deaths on East Market Street. People and trains. People were being killed by trains, because they weren't following the rules. So, I went and got my ATV certification, and I go out with the officers. And we have trained and educated the public, "Don't walk on the tracks." We had some really sad ones, where some children were killed, because they were walking to school, and they had earbuds in. So, you know, it's just horrendous, the tragedy that happened. So, I do feel that, "I'll find a way. I'll find a way. You give me a problem, I'll find a way." Can I solve everything? No. But I do want to give credit to staff, because we have an amazing staff. And of course, the city manager is the one who tells the staff what to do. But my job is to go through the city manager and say, "Mr. Davis, and he's doing a great job. You know, we need to deal with this. We need a solution for this. What can you do to help me? What can staff do to help me?" Because I want to be on the forefront of making sure we have that housing, making sure we have that safety. Another quick issue that I was able to solve, we had lost 130 officers to other municipalities, because they were giving a lot better pay. So, from the dais one night, I sprung on everybody. And I don't usually, I'm usually very thoughtful about, you know, letting staff and let's have discussions prior to... But our police chief stood up there and said, "We are at a crisis level. We are short 130 officers." So, I made a motion from the dais after he finished. And crisis level and public safety is something where we don't want to be. And so, I made a motion from the dais that we were going to raise their pay. Council agreed. It was a seven to two vote.
And what does dais mean for them?
Dais, oh, I'm so sorry. Dais is where we sit up there, like the judge sits up there. But it's not quite as bad as it seems, because a lot of people get nervous if they come talk to council. But we're just regular people too. So, yes, the dais is where we are sitting, and the audience is in front of us. So, I made that motion, and it passed. And I'm telling you what, we are only 13 officers short now. That was less than a year and a half ago, I made that motion. And we are less than 13 officers short.
Yeah, I remember back in, I did the Police Academy, and that was something that I heard before, was like that they were short like 100 and something.
Yes. That was kind of panic time. So, I'm glad you took the Citizens Police Academy. I took it as well. And I think that has given me a good sense of, you know, how our public safety works. I did a little one with the fire department that was for elected officials. But, you know, you go and learn. I've been on a snowplow. You know, all of these things that I took it upon myself to try to learn. I took the Citizens Academy, which gives you an idea of each department. Back in the day, we had something called Impact Greensboro, which talked about neighborhoods a lot. We had Greensboro Neighborhood Congress, which is something I would like to see about starting again. It was all the neighborhoods coming together and bringing their ideas. And it was, to me, it was just fantastic. All the neighborhoods would meet, and we would ask for concerns, anything like that. You know, kind of like a town hall, but not as stuffy sometimes as a town hall can be. Some of them tend to be.
And one of your proudest accomplishments has been the Family Justice Center, who just celebrated their 10-year anniversary. So, for people who don't know what that is, can you explain it? And what role did you play in it, and why does it matter?
Okay, domestic violence, elder abuse, child abuse, all of those things have such traumatic effects on our community. You think of a child who's been abused, a domestic violence situation that that child has seen. Elder abuse is happening all the time. Back in 2011 or '12, I was asked to be on a committee to see if Greensboro was, and Guilford County, were ready for something like a Family Justice Center. Family Justice Center is basically a one-stop shop. If someone comes in, and you'd be surprised, male or female, who is in an abusive situation, or they're trying to flee an abusive situation, they come in, and everything is right there. So, there's a triage person who figures out what the person needs. They may need to get a 50B, which would keep the abuser away from them. They may need to retrieve their belongings, which an officer would help with that. They may need to see a judge at some point, and it all wraps around that person. They may need some medical care. And so, in the building, the Family Justice Center building, are all of these services that can wrap around and embrace that person, so they don't feel like they're all alone. Before then, they had to go here, they had to go down the street, they had to go to the courthouse, they had to go across town to get the services they needed. Now, there's one place where they can go. I was very, very excited about the possibility of one coming and being established here in Greensboro. And I did not know until my adult years, but my mother was a victim of domestic violence. She had never told me. If you realize, back in the 50s and 60s, you didn't talk about it. But what happened is, I was seven days old, and she fled with me and my brother. And she started getting jobs herself. And you think about back then, that was not common. And she supported us. She delivered newspapers in the middle of the night, with us asleep in the backseat. And I did not know how extensive her abuse was until I was well into my 30s and early 40s. And so, I was thinking, you know, this is something that I definitely want to see happen. I don't want anyone to ever have to go through what my mother did.
Did your mom get a chance to see the Family Justice Center?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, she was there for the ribbon cutting.
Oh.
Yeah. She was so excited. Yeah, because he held a gun to her belly when she was pregnant with me. And it didn't discharge. So, my great aunt had told me all those stories. And I was like, "Is this for real?" And then, I did get the courage to ask my mother, and it was all for real. And it was validated by my uncle and several other family members. And yeah, yeah, I was so excited. And, you know, I have taken people there. I have friends who have taken people there. And I will say, there's one sad thing. It takes an abused person, sometimes seven times, before they will really leave their abuser. And I've taken some people there who have gone back to their abuser. But I've taken some people there who have gotten all of the services, and they just are ecstatic about the Family Justice Center. And I will say, it's actually the very first collaboration between the county and the city that was so successful. Absolutely the first. And we are all excited about it. I know that you know about the 10th anniversary. And we opened one in High Point, and that one's been open about five years. But if I recall correctly, you know, over a span of five, six years, it must be up to the full 10, over 70,000 people have gotten assistance of some sort. Now, some of that may have been by phone, or... But most of it's been in person, people walking in the door.
Wow, that's great.
Yeah, I am proud.
So, you've been in office so long. So, what is one misconception that people have about you?
Misconception, that I don't have amazing leadership qualities. You know, I am a leader. You could ask the nine counties of elected officials that I oversee. I want to be, for people to know that I am ready for this, and I am willing to do this. And I think the misconception is that I'm not strong. And I am willing to do this. And I think the misconception is that I'm not strong enough. Um, I'm not sure why, because I've been very strong many times over the years. In fact, one reporter said, don't mess with Mary Kay. Because I uh, someone was being disruptive in a meeting and I was running the meeting and I asked the the uh security to please take them out. We, I I can't allow disruptions when we're trying to attend to so much business. You know, there are things. So I think uh a lot of people have not seen my leadership qualities. And that's what I'm hoping to express, that I am a leader. I have innovative solutions for any problem or challenge you bring me. Or I will find an innovative solution or challenge. Now, I will preface that by saying, uh, yes, there are some rules and regulations that the state has over us that we cannot change. Because I get asked all the time, can you get this changed? Can you do this? No, the state, the state governs some of those, but we have wonderful legislators who listen. So you know, that's how it goes.
So do you feel like you have Nancy Vaughn's endorsement? And does that matter to you as like she's been kind of like a mentor to you?
Oh, well, I, you know, I think she supports me in many ways. There is one thing that Yvonne Johnson said when we were running, because when you're running the at-large race, you're actually running against each other. Okay? So we never really endorse each other. And the reason is, there may be someone, and Yvonne Johnson said this, she said, Mary Kay, there may be someone who loves me and does not like you. There may be someone who likes you and does not like me. We don't want to confuse people. But, you know, she always said, I support you. Uh, I support what you're doing. Uh, but to come out and make endorsements, I don't even like to make endorsements. Because then you are given a label. And what if you change your mind for some reason, which you hope you wouldn't? But it's a possibility.
And if you don't win this mayor race, what's next for you?
Oh, I'm gonna win. That's the answer. I'm I'm, I'm gonna win.
And then my final question is, what kind of Greensboro do you dream about? And how would being mayor help you shape that version of Greensboro?
So Greensboro needs to be, and is is a place where people can live, work and play. We've all heard that cliche. Um, I think we also need to think about Greensboro as the place where everyone has the opportunity to thrive. To me, that's very important. Uh, doesn't matter where you live in the city, doesn't matter anything. Geographically or the color of your skin or where you came from. Everyone should have opportunities. And I think that as we progress as a city, as we move forward, this is where we're going to find all of the employees and for those companies that are coming. Uh, we're gonna find housing for all of the employees that are gonna be coming to Greensboro to live so that they can thrive. You know, I I think we've got those opportunities and I, and I think we will do it. Um, right now, the economic successes are just off the charts. And you have to think, there are gonna be other businesses, ancillary businesses, which means of course, small businesses cropping up in the same geographic vicinity, who are going to be supplying those huge companies. And and you know, it's just, it thrills me to think that I could be part of, I have been part of, but I could continue to be part of that success because I think we all want to see Greensboro thrive.
Well, thank you so much for joining.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. I truly have enjoyed it.